We're gonna get started with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America into the republic which stands by our nation. Anybody who is above, when the liberty and justice for all.
Jim here first.
Thank you so much, Sir Alex.
No one, thank you, Brian, well, good morning.
This is our bonus for last month.
Okay. And new for eight grand, seventy-four six. That was ready. I went on Ford apartment, boy, Hollis, boy, the man, she was.
Who's gonna report month collections?
Whoever wants to do it.
This is the collection that we received for last month.
Do I just need to say that I'm out?
Jonathan O'Hare.
All right, we received two hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents from Jonathan O'Hare to the Stark County EMS.
All right. Monthly report, not a lot has changed from the norm. Apparently, we're still operating four out of six ambulances at certain intervals, three plus one transfer truck at an ALS interval. ALS staffing, when it permits for the transfer truck. Minimum of one staff member at all times scheduled in medic three. Ninety-two percent of October staffing, which was the minimum made. So everything, that was an increase of fifteen percent staffing once. Last month's coverage was eighty-seven percent, so that means we have two or more paramedics at all times running throughout town. As the goal is, four at all times with the shortage. Chase car is running great, it's doing what it's supposed to, we have a new program that started, the NIH cards, wait until the seventh of the fifteenth to go out and get relettered. So it sits out in a parking lot, that's gonna bring in all kinds of new stuff. Transfers, we did fifty-one transfers out, two hundred and seventy-six calls, it's decreased, but also decrease in emergency calls, because last month we had three hundred and forty some, three hundred and fifty some, I don't know if that figure now. Transfers are still eighteen percent of our call volume, which decreased by eighteen percent, because last month it was thirty-six percent. Personnel, we have no openings. We're full-time EMTs or paramedics, we're fully staffed right now. No new part-time employees, every day I get an application. Which is a good thing, because a lot of departments are having major issues with staff. Training. Training has been reworked in a week, the schedule of field training officers, I just approved next month's training. It's going great, people are actually showing up to this training now. Yeah, now they got, they need their hours, so they have to have a certain amount of continuation, uh, patient hours. Ambulance maintenance, everything is up to date and in service, with the exception of the new one at the very bottom. I did get an email this morning, Rollo Sage. That's the one we have, the new ambulance is getting delivered in January, we just got four thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars back from them. So the price has been lowered at thirty-five hundred dollars. Plus, I get to keep the old ambulance, which is probably one of the most advanced boxes for the next remote top month. So they agreed to discount it, because all the work and everything I put into it, until that time, we use it as, I thought it was a run, but we use it as training, we can run up here and we can put it in as training. The new NIH, like I said, the new NIH is sitting outside, I've added that to the list. With the bases, North Johnson, no issues, other than still needing to widen the door eventually. Medic three, we have a slight issue, because we cannot reinstall that heating system, because of the tracking, the doors are now so close to the roof that that vent that goes across it, because it's radiant heat, will melt the doors. So Rick has actually got me a quote, which I didn't give you guys copy, I just was handing this. He said he can install it, it was thirty-eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, but I'm gonna get some more quotes, that's not being presented now, I just want to keep you guys in the loop of what's going on. Bravertown, still waiting recommendations, I can't get anybody to come out there, look at that building, give me a decent, FBI was supposed to come out and do it, if you guys have any contacts with either FBI, Clary Buildings, or whoever.
You talk rural star, local guy?
No, I didn't.
I try him.
Okay, that'll work too. I just need someone to look at it, because I know right now, we're getting down into cold weather and those external pipes are gonna freeze again.
Hey Jim.
Yeah.
While we're talking about this, I think it's probably right here with what we're discussing, so this, was this part of that project?
Yeah, that's the one, you guys told me to come to you if I needed, I found it in my budget, so.
Okay.
I didn't have to come to you guys.
Yeah, because that way, that okay.
Yeah, that was endorsed for the days. New ambulance still on track to be delivered end of January, and the remount has been moved from July to February, so we'll have one in January, one in February, back to back. Which, the one in February, the remount is already halfway paid for. I paid for that out of the accident money for the other one. Live FAG monitor, it's scheduled to be here at the end of this month. Funding and grant requests, I did get denied for the SIH Subaru grant for fifteen thousand dollars. IDHS, the NIH grant was approved for forty thousand dollars, I got suspended, get reimbursed for it. So Northern Indiana Community Foundation, I've asked them for fifty thousand to help equip it and supply it. They said they won't make their decision till late December, early January possibly, I had to fill out different paperwork because of the price. All grants are just opening up, I just got three of them, notification this morning. No new donations, of course, we have t-shirts for sale for public purchase, as always, and right now, all of our winter year is in great shape. And we should have a fully announced that if I need something, I can get it. Next page, that's the last thing.
Probably some t-shirt.
Twenty-five dollars. And they come in three different colors, pink, blue, they're totally different than what we wear, they say support, wanna back up. Hand tabby, this is a program we already use, the very first page is what our subscription price is currently, every year it gets a seven percent yearly increase. We started out at, right, forty-nine hundred, started the program. Right now, they're at fifty-three oh, well, this is just for information, this is a fifty-three oh one forty-five is their next one. What I would like to do. They made an offer for a two pages in. We signed a three-year contract, it's this program that we're gonna keep around, we keep improving this program and improving and improving it. Basically, what this program does, it gives you all the calculations at three o'clock in the morning on your phone to what pediatric and adult bolrests are, not just bolrests, it covers the medications that you use, weight-based and size-based. We all use it on a daily basis. That's seven percent, I think, bloodstream, but what they did was, they, if we sign a three-year contract, it drops our price. And we're only at a three percent. And we're paying for it anyway.
Right.
So I would rather not, yeah, I would rather not give them another four percent.
Right.
You know what I mean, I wouldn't give them one percent, but still. So the total would bring it down right now, let's not do right this second, I do till March. But this is something, now I have a figure that I can work into my budget, because I know. Yeah, I've got one.
So would you have to pay the fifteen thousand on one?
No, 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 it's built here, so I could actually, and I know for next year, I already budgeted for forty-nine hundred, again, now they raised it to fifty-three hundred. Now, if I go to the three-year quote and sign off and build a three-year contract, I'd get billed next year in March for five thousand fifty-six dollars. Then the following year, I know it's gonna be five thousand two hundred dollars. So that gives me three years' worth of budgeted, oh, I know exactly what it's gonna, just, it's not like the Sanzio software that we use, or the M site that we use to collect. Theirs is based off of how much money we're collecting, with what we're collecting right now, that is crazy, they're getting a nice chunk out of it, but we're also getting a nice chunk coming back in. So I mean, I don't know how to regulate that by what we're, you know what I mean? Right now, what I'm doing is taking a twelve-month average and saying, okay, this is what I need per month, and you divide it that way. If I come short, I find this somewhere.
Well, this seems like a logical decision, because you're saving two hundred and fifty dollars just for a year.
Yeah.
And I say you're gonna use them for the next three years regardless.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this program's, when we first, there's four instructors in here, and I'm one of the instructors, this program, I've watched this program evolve. Where it is something that's unbelievable, it takes the guesswork out of anything. I mean, it tells you, and what airway to use for this, what airway to use for that, what medications to give for this, whether it's a newborn, a preemie, geriatric that weighs eighty pounds, a geriatric that weighs four hundred and fifty pounds, it just, it lays it right out there on the phone app. And you guys can come move in the office, and see, I got the big, bold, old version on my computer. But yeah, I mean, it's a great program, now they have quizzes for daily training, I mean, it's, it's just progressed. Dr. Hand, heavy, Peter was a genius, and he built this program because he screwed up. And he flat-out tells everybody, he almost killed the pace, because he was going by what he thought was the right dosage. Just right, he puts it in the right dosage. That is, I just delivered the paperwork.
This is the truck you picked up, right?
Nope, no, this is, I just delivered that, I was asked to look for it, I found it, that's not for me. When you go, well, yeah.
Okay.
I just, I gave three copies, I didn't know whether it was talked about, discussed before. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to make sure you guys were good with going into three-year contract.
Yeah. Now, he said he had it in his budget.
I got it, I just needed to make sure it was a good.
Yes, I think so, I think it's a good idea.
We can make a motion for the record, even if we don't need it.
I'll make a motion, we let Jim do the three-year contract.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Beautiful, any questions for me? I'll be in French Lake for training, for trying to get into the one that's stopped.
There you go.
So I'll be in there for tomorrow.
I was gonna say this week.
Yes, this week. So, yeah, you wanna check out the new NIH people sitting outside.
What's the newest here?
The gray one, yes, and not the fucking one, okay?
Teresa, for that motion, the first year is five thousand and fifty-six dollars and one cent. The second year will be five thousand two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents, the third year will be five thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents.
Thank you.
Julia?
Morning, do you guys have a copy?
Yep.
All right. This is our annual contractual or services agreement between Purdue and the county that we usually come to the commissioners to have signed each year. Which, we did interview for Health and Human Sciences for our county, and we'll probably be here in the next couple of weeks, so we'll have somebody to fill that role, that one's been open for probably fourteen to fifteen months. And then after that, they'll move into the Ag and Natural Resources role. The amount that's on this form was approved in our budget by the county council for the appropriation.
The fifty-four thousand ten dollars? On here, was that, when was that approved? Is it this year, recently?
I remember that.
Okay.
That was this year, yeah, because every year is a different amount.
Okay, what was the amount last year, do you know?
Probably fifty-two six, or fifty-three, around there.
Okay, so we went up approximately, there's three percent, okay. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking at fifty-four thousand ten dollars. And I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the motion is for fifty-four thousand ten dollars for the agreement between Purdue and Stark County.
We do, we'll inform, we'll maybe sign, there's two pages that side by side, one before and that one. Then I will, I usually take that and scan it and bring it back over.
Just want to signature.
Yeah.
They might have something upstairs that they need, if you want to scan it.
Oh, we have a scanner, because I scanned it in and I have to email it back to Purdue, and I send it to my plane also.
Do you want, do you know when the appointment's gonna be for the planning commission?
We have asked a couple people and have not heard, one has said no, I'm still waiting for another one to get back to me.
Okay.
About that.
Do you want this, or?
I usually, I usually scan it in and bring it and send it over to my plane, is what I do. And I keep the copy, so I'll do that right now.
Justin, I assume that's acceptable? Contract, yeah, if it's a little of the email to me, then yes, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's Kelly here, there she is.
Um, just let me give you a update, Rhonda has been fired, she has passed her drug test, she's better onboarding, all that good stuff, I have her in Laos, I have her in the vein. Laos will be here Wednesday, and so will Rhonda to get started, they are going to train me and her both at the same time, how they want it done, for their system. That's it.
That's great news.
Keep us in touch, if you will.
I know, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Eight hours a week, is she gonna be working?
So she, she'll be here with me in the evenings.
Okay.
We'll be here, but Wednesday, she'll be here at noon, and so we'll follow the financial side, and then we'll go from there.
So ten, fifteen hours a week?
Yeah, it won't be over part-time hours, I think thirty-two hours is the limit, yeah, it won't be, no.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Right, thank you.
And I think we took care of Holly. Holly's not here anywhere. No. Mikey?
Hello?
Morning.
How are you guys doing today?
Good, you're good.
I don't know, you do have a copy of the contract, let's give you that. Not know if you guys were able to look at the email, but I just wanted you to go through the copy of this, and some testimony from our Start Pink winners this past year. That was emailed to you, and then this is a little bit of our adult education. Just so you guys have some, this was sent in the email as well. Just so you have that.
All right, so do you wanna tell us what your request is?
Yes, so I am coming here and asking for an increase in my contract from eighty, from eighty-nine, eight to a hundred and thirty thousand, it is a forty thousand dollar increase that I'm asking for. It is for the Economic Development Foundation is a strategic accountable way to accelerate local business growth and workforce readiness. So we have taken over adult education at the foundation, our Workforce Development Committee has spearheaded that, we're partnering with Ivy Tech, and we are going to be bringing pathways for careers to Stark County Valley, where we will be able to bring Ivy Tech in for an array of different kinds of trainings, and it can be like, if you want some HR help, like we could bring, there's a forty-foot mobile learning lab that they have offered to the foundation, that we would be able to do like Microsoft three-six-five, Excel, Word classes, entrepreneurship training. And then we could go in and do a more of a deep dive into NIG welding, HVAC work, different things like that, to be able to boost career pathways for residents.
You actually got one class in progress, don't you?
We just.
Today, but.
Yes, and we just actually finished a QuickBooks class last week that we gave thirteen people within Stark County on the QuickBooks online, because QuickBooks is changing from there from the basic edition to you have to go online, so we provided that service to thirteen businesses within Stark County. And we have in January already scheduled with the Indiana Small Business Development Corporation, we will be bringing a class for AI and marketing to the foundation for, to help businesses with marketing strategies using AI.
That was a forty thousand increase on a two-year.
Two-year, yes, yes, two-year rolling, yes.
Well, do you mind if I take questions?
Go ahead.
Roberta?
Right, so I have a little bit of hair, I do wanna start by making something pretty clear first, and that is that I do fully support economic development, business growth, and increasing opportunities here in Stark County. I do want to see our time succeed, what I'm asking for today is not to stop that growth, but to make sure that we pursue responsible, strategic growth that truly does benefit our taxpayers. With that in mind, I do have three connected issues, you want to tie into the Economic Development Foundation. One is our missing capital improvement plan. Two is the request to renew increased funding for the Economic Development Foundation. And the third one is the new economic reality created by SB one. So first regarding planning, to my knowledge, the Economic Development Foundation has never presented a capital improvement plan, a strategic plan, or any formal economic reporting to this council. If those documents exist, they have not been shared publicly, and taxpayers have not seen them. If those documents exist, they have not been shared publicly and taxpayers have not seen them. Um, best practice clearly states of these should be reported quarterly to the commission and council. At the beginning of the year, I contacted the Department of Local Government Finance about our lit economic development tax. The D L G F told me directly that many county collecting that task, the tax must have a capital improvement plan and that our commissioners needed to have it completed by the end of this year. The D L G F is now auditing for that compliance for Stark County. They also told me we would be okay as long as we got the C I P in place this year, but, um, assuming we still don't have one. And this is not the first time I've brought this to this group of people. Um, a C I P is not red tape, it's the foundation of responsible growth and without it, you can't prioritize infrastructure, plan long-term investment, compete for grants, or guide our lit dollars in a way that actually helps businesses and citizens. So, in regards to the Economic Development Foundation, I do support economic development, but only when it's done with transparency planning and measurable results. Account, what we, what I have not seen presented, and if it is, please correct me and I'd love to see it, um, is a countywide strategic plan, a business recruitment strategy, a business retention and expansion program, formal quarterly reporting, or measurable outcomes and jobs, investment or grant dollars. At the same time, Knox, Hamlet and North Judson have all withdrawn their participation. That is not sign of healthy collaboration, but the most urgent piece is the one many counties are overlooking, and that's S B one. It is completely reshaped how rural counties can grow. The most urgent piece is the one many counties are overlooking. And that is S B one limits how much property tax revenue rural counties can gain from large industrial developments. That means our best opportunity is no longer high cost, high infrastructure, low return developments like warehouses or data centers. S B one is gonna shift to this smart strategy towards tourism, recreation, natural assets, small business development, downtown growth, workforce and housing stability, quality of life investments that attract people to live, work and spend money here in Stark County. I support that direction, it's responsible growth, the kind that builds a strong long-term tax base rather than chasing short-term illusions. But here's the real concern, has the E D F shown any plan for responding to S B one? Have they presented a tourism strategy, a small business plan, a workforce strategy, or post S B one growth model? If they have, it has not been shared publicly, this is not anti-growth, it's pro-growth done the right way. Our county deserves a complete capital improvement plan, a modern economic development strategy that reflects S B one, a tourism and small business development plan, a business retention and expansion program, orderly public reporting and measurable results for taxpayer dollars. Until those pieces are in place, approving more funding or increasing funding is not responsible governance. I support development, I support progress and I support investing in strategies that will actually work for a rural county like Stark. But support requires accountability, it requires planning and support requires measurable outcomes. Stark County deserves a real vision for economic development that is transparent, strategic and impactful, not vague promises or missing documents. Again, I am not against growth, I am for responsible growth that improves our community and delivers real value to taxpayers. Good governance requires that transparency, economic development requires measurable results. And quite honestly, Stark County deserves both, oh, thank you.
Okay, do you have any thoughts to that?
Um, yeah, so, uh, last year I came before you guys and I actually asked to, for money for a strategic plan. That was denied, so that's one of the, that's one point. Uh, second point, workforce development, uh, I am actually bringing you that, I'm talking about that plan today. Uh, and how I think that, uh, if we create this workforce pipeline, um, we can rechange jobs locally. Uh, we also need to be looking in, because she meant, um, Roberta mentioned S B one. We can't be looking at just making sure that our population is changed, keeping. S B one is changing because of our S E A one enact is changing the way that property taxes are, are doing. So we have to be looking at local income tax, if we can raise our local, if we can raise our local income, we'll be able to save it that way, so that answer is my one, her other thing, um. A, the tourism thing that you mentioned, we actually have a tourism group aboard, so that, that I, I don't really step onto their toes. I think there's a great way for us to be able to collaborate together, but they have a board that focuses, uh, specifically on, um, tourism within Stark County, um.
Are they focusing on the businesses that bring the tourism or just tourism? Because those are two different things, right? For the Economic Development Foundation, you guys should be looking at, okay, what kind of businesses do we need to be attracting? We don't see you guys in the community, I know we've had this conversation, you know, y- you have so many opportunities. Our D P, our E D F has to be out there in the public, most of the people in this county have no idea it's even out there. We have a lot of really smart people in this county, people that can run and, and can create business opportunities right here. But if they don't know the types of businesses that we need in the county, that our Economic Development Foundation and our commissioners and council are willing to support, then they, they have no path forward. And these are the opportunities, again, I think about, you know, tourism, great, we put in a coyote. So what, what kind of businesses can we, can we attract to help drive the tourism to use those ways? And that doesn't really fall on the tourism department, that's, that's business, that's still, in my opinion, falls on the Economic Development Foundation. And I appreciate Stark Tank, but again, I just want to add, if I remember correctly, we paid for that too, right?
You didn't pay for it, you sponsored it, but there was a lot of people that sponsored it, it wasn't just what you, the county gave a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, it was, it was, you know, I, it was, it was, it was, yeah, it was one of a bunch of a thousand dollar donations that we received. Um, a business, uh, expansion and retention program I am running right now, I have done, um, with our major, um, industry, I've done seven B R N visits this year, so I have one scheduled, um, with J W Hicks, uh, the, at the end of the year, so we, I will have eight done. Um, I, I feel like I am, um, working on making sure that we get our local businesses, they're staying here, they're expanding and that we're giving them enough resources that we, we can provide to them that they're at their fingertips and they're there.
Well, I'm gonna mention that you're at a little bit of a disadvantage today because there's only two commissioners here.
Yes.
Um, to be honest, um, I'm not in favor of a two-year contract, I wasn't last year, I'm not this year. Um, now, Donnie may feel different, I'll, he, he'll be talking here in a second, I'm sure. Um, you know, across the county, we've done three, four percent increases on, on wages and so forth. I would feel comfortable with that going into twenty twenty six, uh, which would put you rounded up to about ninety five thousand, uh, for the ask, but I would only be comfortable with a, a one-year contract.
Okay.
Uh, and Donnie may feel different, so I'll let him kind of.
I feel a two-year contract for forty thousand. And I mean, why not? They can't grow, they can't go, they can't do what Roberta's wanting to do, if they ain't got money, for one.
That is a, that is a, um, I also, the point that she made, um, we've had people pull out of our contracts, if you guys are in a contract with us, I mean, you're the county, I am Stark County Economic Development. I'm looking for an investment into the county because I'm trying to invest in the county myself and I don't have the resources currently to be able to do that. And the way that she, that Roberta was mentioning, I'm not saying that anything she's saying is wrong, I mean, it's right, but I, I don't have any money to do a strategic plan for you guys. Our comp plan is from twenty nineteen, it's outdated, it's old, don't have any money to do that either, though. We are looking at things that take dollars to be able to do and we don't have those resources, but in all reality, yes, all of those things are very needed, very, we, we don't have those things now.
But can't you create a strategic plan? Isn't that your job?
Yeah, it, it, it is, but you are looking for stakeholder engagement, we're looking for the communities to be engaged as well, but without having a cohesive front at all, we're not, we're never going to make, we're never going to make that, like, I have been coming up with strategic plans, but no one likes any of them, so if we're not.
Sharing, because I haven't seen you come here in front of this board or the council with those plans.
Well, but that's why they have representatives appointed to my board, so Kay and Todd are here today, um, they both represent the county, um, council, so they, Donnie represents the commissioners for us, so they are coming to my meetings, they are hearing my plans and they are the ones that are, are ingesting that and they, they are hearing my plans.
I mean, you're being paid through the county, it's still your responsibility to report those things quarterly, that's what all economic development foundations do. When they come in, they report where they're at, they, they, they provide the plans formal written, which again, you can do. You're teaching A I classes, use A I to help you create a strategic plan. I, I just feel like there's a miss, that's, that's just my personal, and you know, again, my personal take is, you know, you said you want to get in front of the community, you had plenty of opportunities and get in front of the community all summer at all these festivals, you could.
I've been out, I went to all the festivals this summer.
I mean, because I didn't see a booth for you at the fair, I didn't see a booth at the Mint Fest, and you know, I don't know whether, but again, not seeing you out there for the public to come and interact and, and help understand what you guys are doing.
She was at the fair, she was even on the radio with the.
I was at the radio at the fair, I was at the Mint Festival, like I was at the Yellowstone Trail. Yeah, I, I mean, I've been out into the community, so I, I, I appreciate your feedback, of course, but I am making myself very available, you can also come to my office, anytime, you can call, you can, uh, my office is a public place, it's, uh, you can come anytime, I'm not hiding from anyone.
Okay, good discussion, um, anything from the board members over here? You guys have any comments?
I've been to half one meeting, so I really have no.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay.
What she said is true, we're listening, Donnie's been to the meetings, we've both been there and I think she's doing a great job, and she only came in at Jim this year.
Of last year, yes.
Last, last year, well, so.
And they're coming up with all this stuff that didn't do this, didn't do that, she just started. They, we didn't give them enough money for these girls to get a raise last year. Now, they can't even budget on one year.
It is very hard to budget for one year, I, I understand your concern, but it is very hard to budget out for one year for a c- county economic, like, development and making sure that we have everything, because I don't know what next year is going to hold, I don't, without being able to like plan for two, two years out, to like get classes started this year to then like figure out if, if we give out micro grants this year, like what, how much money I would even have next year to be able to funnel that same micro grant again, like, I don't want to just do something for one year and then have it go away, I feel like a two-year plan is the best way to, to, to see a plan come forward, I mean, I can deliver K P I's to you guys, I, I can do a quarterly report if you were to give me more money this way, but right now, that's not within our contract, so like, that's why I haven't been doing, but if that's something that I need to be doing, then that's something I can be doing, but that's not within the contract. I am not a department of the government, I am a private nonprofit organization that does not publicly report to anyone or anything. So that's why I, I don't.
So you got a new store coming in San Pierre.
I have the, we have Dollar General's coming in San Pierre, we're looking at getting a gas station from San Pierre as well. So we are, we are moving and we are shaking as fast as we can.
Do we want a table till Charlie's here, maybe?
If you're not gonna go to your contract, yeah.
Yeah, that might be better.
Yeah.
Okay, well then.
What is your contract?
I just needed to get this conversation on the table and this year, like.
Come back in two meetings?
I can come, yeah.
You can go to the council that evening?
Yeah, um, yeah, I can come, so I can come and present the contract to Charlie at your first December meeting and then I'll have to come back and present to the council in January, because I actually won't be here that week, uh, the second.
But it renews in March, sorry.
And that, it, yes, it contract renews, we need to have, we need.
So you do, like you said, come to our next meeting.
Yes.
And present it to Charlie.
Okay, so, um, I will not, since this got tabled today, uh, I will not be going to the council meeting because there is no very young contract, okay?
Yeah, yes, I know.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was, thank you for your time today, I greatly appreciate you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion to table till our first meeting in December.
I'm second.
All those in favor? Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, March, I'm sorry, there was one thing that had nothing to do with the economic, and that's the capital improvement plan for the county. I, that I brought it up in January, I brought it up again probably in June, I know, like we jumped on it looking into it. We obviously had one on file at some time, to get the lit tax, but I mean, where are we at with that?
No, I don't know, that's really.
That falls under the commission.
Radar a whole lot.
Yeah, you know, it got nothing to do with Mike.
No, that's what I said, separate from Mike.
I just, I just made a rough draft through A I, it's very, very thorough, by five seconds. Maybe I could forward it to Justin. So we would have some, a framework that, that fast, I mean, it's right here.
D L Jeff's gonna audit it this year, and when they do, and we don't have one, your lit tax is gonna go away.
Teresa, can we put that on the second meeting in December? And let's leave a twenty minute slot. Thanks, Mikey.
Thank you.
Alright, Adam?
Yes, morning.
Good morning.
I am here on behalf, and I've got two, three property owners over at Coon's Lake, uh, behind me, we have, uh, Bill, uh, or he goes by William Briggs, it's the owner of track one in the packet information that was given to you guys. And then I also have, uh, Mark White, who is the, his neighbor that owns track two, and this is a three-person petition for vacation right of way, the other owner, uh, Todd was not even here today. Um, I know I've been working with, uh, Justin and with staff, uh, several weeks ago, ended up to last month's council meeting, about looking through what the publication requirements are, notification requirements, and him and I conferring on public hearing before the council. And since then, him and I have gotten back in and looked at various statutes, because in a couple of areas that certainly overlap. And obviously, county, county's definition was, this is your guys' specific jurisdiction to make a decision on the application. Um, so what you have in front of you, the yellow parcels are the current owners' parcels that are petitioning you. The kind of orangish, pinkish area is a platted right of way behind those tracks, um, that they're seeking to have vacated. Um, nothing in those tracks is any improvements, there's currently no utilities, there's no driveways, alleyways or anything of the like, unlike the northeast where you have Maple Avenue that goes back within part of that platted area. Uh, and then there's a roadway to the south southwest, um, that is what's existed, Hickory Avenue is probably, and Locust Avenue.
It's a right of way.
So, where you're kind of circling there, that white area on this big one, so this is all vacant land that's owned by the Raycroft Family Trust.
Okay.
Uh, when we did the public hearing back for the council, we actually had, uh, two members of the family, they're representative of that owner, which from our position, because these tracks one hundred percent are contiguous to and above that property. Uh, they're the most potentially impacted or affected owner and kind of what they say has a lot to do with my standpoint and decision getting made favorably on us. Um, they had spoke to, and I can, Todd is here and was at that meeting and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but their major concern was just understanding what this process was, confirming that obviously in other areas around, um, these existing right of ways and planted areas, if they still had access. But they did confirm that in this area of their property, what's adjacent to this, to the east and the south southeast of this tract is mostly wetland. So they don't have any plans to do anything back there as far as improvements that they wouldn't get to from other areas, because I don't think they can build in that area, we've looked that since then, even though it's not necessarily part of the petition and they're correct in that regard. Um, so really, what, what prompts this is if you look further southwest, there is a section of this that back, I believe, we established, even though it wasn't recorded until twenty twenty four. There was a portion of the same right of way that was vacated, like, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like fifteen or twenty years ago, it just never got reported. That's the one that's owned it, it's the Demra, um, Matt Kerr Trust, and that's part of that thirty foot area. So you can't even conceivably today unless county did eminent domain, create a connection between Maple Avenue that exists and Locust Avenue, that those were going to get extended, without taking more of that property or going back and, and eminent domaining back that, which was already vacated. So to us, this kind of just makes sense, um, you know, you have two thirds of the owners here, if you want to know like what their plans were with the property, they're here to speak to that. It just made logical sense, we dealt with these all over the county, usually they're either in situations like this or they're part of the old abandoned railroad right of way, and some of that is either already been vacated by the railroad, county man jurisdiction, or it's not gonna be covered. County man jurisdiction, or it's not gonna become rails to trails, and this isn't one of those. Uh, so this just makes sense for these folks to get this property in there and be able to utilize that. Um, and not have that be an issue down the road for disjointed access to or from any of these parcels, which front. Um, the main road out there in front of them.
I'd like to know the reason for wanting it, that you're a property owner.
Sure, while they're here, I think part of it is to increase the size of the rear yards, and some of them do have, as you see on here, detached structures. Um, I think if the plan was that they ever want to do any more improvements on there because of the way the code's written. Instead of having to come in for numerous setback variances or things like that, this would allow them to come in and do a real simple bur- uh, building permit process. While having to go in the beast and import, they wanted an addition to the garage, do another exist- existing structure that's within the square footage of their permit.
But you're saying they were not gonna build nothing or do nothing on this land?
No, they're not planning on redevelopment, so each of these is owned by three different individuals, this is not gonna be consolidated, all three of them reside here. So this is a part of like plan to come in with like duplexes or apartment building or larger lot development. This is for each of them, and they're kind of in lockstep, because if one of them was gonna ask for it. You know, why wouldn't we just come in and get the whole thing done and not leave this disjointed, you know, somewhat unusable right-of-way back?
Who's taking care of these parcels now?
They're, it's just wild, it's intended, there's no maintenance back there, it's a hill.
Yeah.
It it's swamp.
I'm not in no favor of vacating. We had that other guy from Bassley, and then asked us to vacate his, which he called the driveway. I mean, it was put in there for a reason, for an easement or something.
I think he's saying that this piece here, you say was.
Yeah, so this one still exists, it's one that's further southwest of there. So here you have Locust Avenue. Um, this section here was vacated back in the nineties, even though the recreation number on there shows it was just recently recorded, this has been vacated for a while. So to be able to connect anything over to here, which in theory, from a development standpoint, would make sense. This would have to be, something would have to happen in either county, or somebody's gonna dedicate more land, and it has to. Do a jog over to here, so vacating this has no impact on Maple continuing this direction. No impact on Locust, which currently exists, there's nothing back. Uh, and from the representatives from this family trust stated that this is all wetland area, and they have no plans for any of that. And their only concern was making sure they had access elsewhere, which they do. Um, they weren't opposed to the petitions in front of you, and again, we front hundred percent of these tracks to that property.
So this piece here is in this trust now?
Correct.
And this here?
It's still part of, uh, the ownership, well, if they don't actually own it, it's still an, uh, unimproved, but platted right-of-way up to this lot. Which they currently access from our focus, so you're not cutting off any access to any of these lots.
And you say this is all one?
Yeah, this piece that they own, I can't remember the total acres, but it's, it's sizable. And I want to say it's like eighty acres.
These folks don't have an interest in these pieces.
Correct. They didn't have anything over here planned because of the limitations from an environmental standpoint for wetlands, that they couldn't even do anything over there. But they just wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to have an impact on, say, preventing access to the east. Or from down here on Locust, which it doesn't.
Does county maintain these roads?
Very true, you have that.
Um, so what he's wanting vacated is not on the end-up inventory, so we are currently not being picked.
With the ones around it?
Yes.
You do maintain them?
And that you don't have any interests or use for them space? Well, to their point, it's not gaining the county anything.
Right.
And if these folks don't have an interest in it. This here is gonna end up. Just a lost piece, I guess?
Yeah, who could petition either the trust here that owns this large tract petition, or either of these lot owners, depending on ownership. They would do the same thing, they'd petition, that would make sense to vacate that, it becomes part of their lots.
We haven't had a public hearing in this, have we?
I thought they did with the council.
They did with the council.
But not with the commissioner?
Not with commissioners, no.
And what was the public feedback at the council meeting?
So, again, the representatives of, uh, Raycraft were there, I even had gotten some correspondence before that. Advertised hearing, which I'd sent over to Justin, say, this is what's been going on, question-wise, that we've gotten back on this. Um, and they were neither for or against it, they were there for informational purposes, with the goal being just making sure that this wasn't gonna. Impact their ability to have access for any future use of their property, which it doesn't. Um, and their other testimony was the fact that confirming, as my folks stated, this is a wetland area, so even if there was gonna be something happening. I mean, they'd be looking at mitigation ratios and all that, so I guess only if it made financial sense, which. They gave no indication that they were gonna do anything in that portion.
If, have we made any decisions at all here, if we want to go have a public hearing on it?
So, I think the discussion that Adam and I had, and I, I sent you guys an email about why it came back before you guys, so it was kind of a. Protracted explanation, um, since the county council had held the public hearing. If you get, you can if you want, but we are safe if you do not want to, just merely saying, does anybody else have any comments? Since the public hearing was already conducted, it was advertised, notice went to the interested property owners, um. By the council, so if you want to have one, you can have one, I don't think it's necessary, that's what we talked about, Adam, to have one, you can really just say, anybody have any public comments? So whatever direction you guys want to go with that, cause I think we have hurdled the necessary statutory prerequisites. Prior to, especially since the interested property owners all received mail notice, um, prior to the county council meeting, um.
And that with all property owners around it?
Everybody would have gotten correspondence, yes, or a notice, I should say, but. You can have another one if you'd like to, it's up to you guys.
Again, we're at the limitation, we only have two commissioners here today.
All right.
I wouldn't be opposed to, um, setting a date in December. Right, and see if Charlie wants to weigh in on this, um, I. I'm kind of in between, um, I I hate to lose something that may be down the road useful to the county. But on the same section, I don't know what that would ever be.
Do that table two, another meeting, so we got, we can get a public hearing.
Might not hurt just to say we did.
Right.
So, second meeting in December, maybe?
Yeah, gotta give this time.
And Charlie should be here for that meeting.
Right.
Is there anything specific then, if that's gonna get set, you want in additional, just so you guys feel you have all the information you need to make a decision?
Think it'd be great if that family was here, but I don't think that's your responsibility, I think if we send out a public notice, it's up to them to go.
Well, and I can make sure that Justin, for, cause I mean, there was like, I think four or five emails back and forth between, um. Two of the family members, um, one who's got the same name as the trust, and then others, a daughter who's been to Mary. Uh, we can get that into the package, just so you can see that discussion, um. And then to the extent that there was some, I have noticed some things from the public hearing that have been for the, uh, county council.
And how much land is each parcel?
Uh, it's very small, it's twenty-five by. They're all slightly different, but they're basically twenty-five by thirty. Um, except for Todd's piece, he's only got two of those twenty-foot, uh, twenty-five-foot wide parcels, so his is fifty by thirty. The other two are seventy-five by thirty, and they are on a slight angle, so they're slightly. Different dimensions, I think the survey description. I want to say they're less than an eighth of an acre each. They don't have acreage on here, but we can get that, I can get that back from the surveyor, so we'll put that on the separate sheet.
And that's what you're saying, oh, twenty by fifty or twenty by thirty?
Yeah, cause this is part of that old original development, and literally, you can see in here, he's got the original lots that were planted to make up each of these tracks. So like Track One is lots nine through eleven, so there's three on twenty-five by the depth, which is. Hundred and thirty-three feet on one side, hundred and fifty-three, fifty-three feet on the other side, but the right-of-way is exactly a thirty-foot less. So you're taking whatever the rear width is of that lot by that thirty feet, that's it.
So I think, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we set this for a public hearing for our second meeting in December.
Yeah, I'm second to this.
And Teresa, is there any way that you can, uh, work with him and and get this so we can put it up on the screens?
Yeah.
So people can see what we're talking about here?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
How much time do you want for that one, Matt?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be a public hearing, so twenty minutes?
Yeah, within twenty.
Twenty minutes and everybody's.
Yes.
Hey, thank you, thank you.
So your seventy-five by thirty is gonna be point oh five one acre.
Point what man?
Point oh five, okay.
Point zero five one.
Okay, before we get into vendor claims, I want to, outside of, you don't want to listen. Bandy?
Yeah.
I am under the impression, and you didn't tell me this, I found out through the grapevine, that you recently won an award.
Yeah, I did.
Would you mind sharing with us what you want?
Um, so, um, I won the outstanding reporter of the year for A I C. Uh, so it's my second year in a row.
All right, I'm with vendor claims, then we'll open it up to the.
You got them.
Um, yes, I have them here. Was there anything you have questions?
Nope.
See if you recognize any of these, or went through gems. Shouldn't we be done with that?
I don't think we are.
I guess, what are we still paying for?
Well, that's the key weight thing too.
Okay, so that's, so he's just billing us under that?
I'm guessing, yeah. But the other one kind of had a standstill.
Is that that litigation you're asking about?
Yeah.
So, uh, last correspondence, I think I forwarded it to you guys from Sean. Um, well, it's actually, hang on, give me, give me thirty seconds, I'll pull, I'll pull it up again.
Teresa might know, right, what that was? Or maybe Rebecca?
What are we talking about?
Uh, page three, three. Three, one, five, zero, zero, legal fees.
The hog there. So, last update from Sean.
I don't have it in front of me.
Was in October, um, October twenty-seventh, um, I got forwarded this to you guys, but I don't spend a few weeks. Okay, they filed a brief, so keep in mind the trial court bound force. Um, granting, I believe, our motion for summary judgment, or motion to dismiss, um. And then they hit appeal that, since it was an appealable order, so. Appellants, which would have been the losing party, which have been Hoogs, Hogs, however you pronounce their name, would have filed an appeal. Which would have had to include an appellate's brief, so Sean would have had to file an appellate's brief defending the lower court's decision, since the court found for us. Um, I believe there was also a question about attorney fees, because I think Sean got us an award of attorney fees, um, so they would have to pay us for. What we've spent on it, um, it's doing very well in litigation, I mean, all at all steps, they found for us, including, again, their order to pay us our attorney fees, so. I think it has to do with an appeal of the grant of our attorney fees at the lower level, and also appeal of the lower court's decision. That was as of October twenty-seventh, but, um.
So there's still hours being developed.
There is, yeah, cause if they're trying to appeal some of those decisions, and those generally don't go well for the person appealing, but.
No, I think it's just on hold.
Okay. See this? I just don't remember proving anything like that.
Right.
That's standing here, isn't it?
I don't think so. Dan, lift your claim on here.
Uh, fifteen thousand, did you have a claim for that?
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Doesn't sound familiar.
That one for the lock to the jail, was it, Stan?
Sorry, what you said?
They want for locks at the jail, was it?
No.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's, it's under the jail.
I've got there, but the, my, call acre, pull up on during the committee.
And well, like I said, that one just caught me, and then this is lease rental payment. I think that's, I think that's under the seated.
Yeah.
I think those were the only ones that I had that I was questioning, um.
We can hold on that, but I'm pretty, one in the rock place called Stanley.
Actually, Todd here?
Yeah.
Hey, would you mind coming up for just a second and see, maybe you'd recognize this? You've been on the council for a while.
Hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars.
That's why I'm questioning it.
No, I don't pay it, I just.
No, no, it was only a hundred thousand, this is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Oh, five hundred?
Yeah.
And what's it under?
Principal payment on the.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
The principal payment on the jail.
It's for U S Bank, that's what.
No.
It's probably that.
It's the, it's the, it's the JLC.
So, yeah, it's funded payment on.
Look at fifteen. Hold back on there.
For that much money.
Okay, Rebecca's here with the names, so questions.
The experts here. Well, the, the, first, let's, let's just verify the big one, that we think we know what it is. Um, right here, for the seated jail project. Um, we have pay U S Bank five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, just for paying it on.
Okay, so that's a one-time-a-year?
Yes.
Payment? Twice a year?
Yep.
So that's, uh, what, once in February then, probably?
It's due January first and July first of every year.
Okay, so this is probably the January first, okay. I know, that makes. Yeah, and then the other one. That was, we already covered it. We covered that one.
Lock.
I bet you it is.
That's a special prosecutor.
Yes. Other than this, I didn't see anything else.
No.
Yeah. You sure we had a court order for that sale, well, it was for a special prosecutor for a case.
So how many more years are we paying the U S Bank on that?
Twenty thirty-two.
How many?
Twenty thirty-two.
Twenty thirty-two, okay. So about six more years, roughly.
From the tax rate, it'll go away, you'll have to redo the tax rate, you're putting on.
I can think of, I don't know why, I believe, Stan, we were, oh, it's a different Stan.
Did I?
And it has a court order attached to it.
I can't find it, everyone else.
He said it did have a court order to have to do it. Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, perfect.
You're right, you have a good word for it.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, and then I don't know if you guys wanna see the court order, because there was a court order attached to.
Alright, Johnny, um, we have vendor claims of nine hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Don't move.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, we have payroll claims, three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I don't think we got anything else? We got the minutes from the November seventh meeting. Second, all those in favor? A quick question before you jump in.
The strategic plan, there was just a brief discussion of the strategic plan. What do you want me to do with that? I see Todd, which I appreciate, sent me a copy of something, I mean, I've never done one of those before, I mean, if you guys, you know, want me to put something together, I just don't, people in the public chirping at me because they think I did something weird with the strategic plan, I've never done one, so.
We're just individually emailing something with thoughts, and then on our meeting that we've got twenty minutes for, we can.
Do you want me to put something together for you guys? Again, I've never done one before, but that's me.
I still need all you guys.
Happy to do it, I just have never done it before, so.
I'll, I'll just get back with you individually.
I just, alright, I just didn't want December to come and everyone to look down the table at me, if they sit there like, I don't know, okay.
You got anything else, I don't, uh, we gotta do this. Um, so our last meeting, we made a motion to send a letter to a planned commission member that has not been in attendance. And I just wanna make sure this is squared away before we start making appointments here another month. Um, so we've got a draft here, it's been approved by our attorney, I think we just need a motion to approve to send it. Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Bye. Alright. Anybody from the public, okay?
I forgot to add myself on the agenda, so that's my sin. Okay, so Hamlet Industrial Park for about eight hundred feet, long, thirty feet wide. For hot mix, it'll be twenty-one thousand, six hundred, it's gonna need about three hundred tons. And then, my estimate for trucking is high fifteen thousand, and then five thousand for my crew. Um, so that's about forty-one thousand, six hundred, you wanna know about the price of.
But that's only dealt for a couple of years, right?
I'd say, yeah, and, I mean.
If not long.
It is pretty. It's pretty good, it should be done next, next year if we take it over.
I think we should take it over, I mean, it's our industrial park. We don't take it over, but now I could say in order to pack and just go all over everybody's road. My opinion.
So. Um, if you wanna add it to our inventory, then you would add eight hundred feet north of five hundred north, forty feet wide. That would be, that would be your motion.
So I'll set that motion.
Well, historically, have, haven't we had the landowner pay for the road improvement before we take it?
Yes, part of it, at least, and that, I mean, I don't know who you guys been talking to. So you wanna talk to him first, and see if he's willing to bring any money, or do you wanna?
I would take so.
Yeah.
If they, I mean, we're gonna go that.
Wonder if we can read your claim, or maybe have Teresa reach out and see if he wants to come to our next meeting about it.
Okay.
At least have that discussion before we.
So it's always been his road, Rachel, we, the county's never owned that road?
No, it's always been theirs.
Okay.
To the first meeting in December.
Now, I can't remember, were they in favor of us?
Yeah, they wanted us.
Yeah, I think, I think that was right, yeah.
But you're probably in charge.
No.
Um, okay, is that done?
Yep.
Next thing is, NOFA opened up, it's a notice of funding for doing your bridges. This will be the fourth time that I've applied for Bridge thirteen, the, the department has applied for Bridge thirteen. This is the bridge that's over the Robins that we talked about last year, about doing the three culverts, well, we can't do that. Uh, the engineers said it's just, it would restrict the water flow too much.
No.
Yeah, so I can't do the culverts, um, it's a very.
You can't do no kind of forward, not concrete or nothing.
No, all the engineers, even from Tedco, said no, it restricts the flow too much, is what I'm being told. We also talked about with the council, possibly building our own bridge, like not going through consultants or funding, and getting a grant match, just using all of our money, that's gonna be about one point four million dollars. This, um, the cost is about the same of when we applied for the last time. It'd be a three million dollar bridge, our match would be six hundred and fifteen thousand. It's rated as a four right now, it's on the deficient bridge list and has been. Need to get, we need to get it going again.
So I should probably apply again.
Yeah, yeah, definitely apply. And why it costs so much, cuz of the engineer?
Um, you mean.
His was what the engineer costs like.
Like, in general, why does it cost so much?
Yeah.
Just rising prices. And it's, it's a federal aid project, so the difference between us doing it and then going for grant funding, there's a lot more, um, elements that you have to add in, and go by the federal standards than if we were just to do it. Regardless, we were just to do it, and I still have to approve it, approve it to open it.
Right.
And it's frowned upon to, I don't wanna say take the back door away around it, but try to save money and do it ourselves, uh, I was told that Endot would really give us a hard time getting it approved to open it.
Todd?
Hey, the only, the only question I have is, the cash bank, the, the trip bag we got two on the Old Hill River Bridge. We ended up paying millions more.
And this was.
It was so far out, and here's the same thing, if they're saying it's gonna be what, twenty points, and what'd you say?
One point, around one point five.
One point five, so by the time they let it, six, seven years, or eight years.
Twenty thirty-one.
Okay, so I was pretty close, but I said, it's gonna be double that, I'll guarantee you, at least. So, we commit to it now, come then, we're gonna have to come up with all that extra money. Like, all that money we did on the Yellow River Bridge, which is, it's not racist fault, that's a very, very unfair way they do things.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we had asked or considered maybe funding the whole thing ourself, and then we're not caught in that trip back.
Right.
That was just, that was the reasoning, my, my reasoning for you typing about.
When would you know if you've got the grant on that?
I think they do the approvals in January, January, February, it's, um, due December first.
So we could apply for it. And then we can make the final decision in January whether we got it or didn't.
Yeah.
If, if you get it, are we committed to it?
No.
No?
Yeah, okay, go for it.
No, you can always pull out, it's there's no commitment. But you need the, like, this is saying that if we do get it, we may be willing to consider to put in the six hundred and fifteen thousand.
Well, I would have to go to council too.
But, like I said, if we do get it, I mean, you can always pull out of it too. Do you want me to go to council tonight, or if we get it?
How much they lost, did, did he have?
Right now, six hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, so if we give him that money, we pull out, what happens to that money?
No, we don't, so, we don't give him this money until twenty thirty-one, yeah, unless we're accepted.
You can come tonight, want to.
I don't really want to, but.
I mean, I don't think.
So she's saying she'll know early January?
Yeah.
And then we can make a decision.
Yeah, like they've done before with this, asking for a commitment.
Right, yeah. Do you wanna make a motion that we would be willing to commit the six hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yep.
Yeah, but can you, um, write your name instead, I don't know. Or if you'd like to drop by the shop after this meeting and sign it with a printed version of your name, I see you have two.
How about I just sign on me?
That's fine.
Will that be okay with you?
Fine. Make sure you're voting on vice president. Hey, I'm not coming to your meeting for the loader bucket, so you can scratch me off your agenda.
You know what?
Oh, boy.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Hi.
I am.
Do you have any questions, comments, concerns, anything?
How's your snow plow program looking for this year? I know you got your first test the other day.
I think they did very, very well.
Yeah?
Yeah, the, uh, north of thirty had between nine and twelve inches of snow. Very scary, early in the morning, but they worked, most of the employees worked three AM to three PM on Monday. Um, some had started at eleven PM, cuz we had some trees go down with the heavy snow.
You got adequate lighting on all the trucks, I think some speed lit up good at night?
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, we have some, um, over the past year, we've been installing some new strobes that are really nice. Um, you know, we had a lot of things, little things break here and there, pretty much on every single truck, but with the first snow and the first plowing uh, event, you're gonna have that.
Okay.
You get going out mowing year round, like you did before?
Um, I did plan on doing the mowing, but there is a mower out there doing the brush chopping, not not the thick trees, just the more the bushes, also if you do see a mower out there, they're not mowing, mowing, but they're brush chopping, which he does, so everybody knows. They go along, do the bushes, but then he will put his arm down and do, so it looks like he's mowing, but he's just.
I just wanna make sure you're ready to mow.
Yeah, it's, um, I have a pump down on that one right now, so it's been down for about two weeks, but once it gets back up, I plan on sending him back out. Cuz he's just gonna do the whole county, throughout the, you know, whenever it can, when it's not snowing.
Good. Alright, thank you. Are anybody else? Sir?
Yeah, so, um, my question is related to non-disclosure agreements and NDAs. I was wondering if the commissioners would be open to, uh, drafting a resolution that would prevent commissioners from entering into such types of agreements, I'm not suggesting that you will or you are, but it just seems like having that kind of a policy might lower the temperature out there in some of the discussions that are going on in these days.
I guess I don't, I, is there any, without giving out too much information, is there anything you can give us that's more specific to what you're?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, well, if you had a non-disclosure agreement, i- if you stop, if you prevented um, the signing of agreements with developers that are out there for land developments and things like that, if you had a policy against such a thing among the commissioners, it might lower the temperature on the data discussion, the development discussion, those types of things, I'm not sure if you have a policy like that.
Come up with.
No, it hasn't, but I'm just saying that there's been discussion about it within this whole data about, you know, data center development, and it might help lower the temperature if you guys had a policy that prevented you from doing that.
Are you talking about Tom, like them as end of it, like, say if they own in their personal capacity, if they have like two hundred acres, and they sign an NDA personally, are you just talking about?
Not, we're saying with some of these large data center developments and maybe others, the
Like with the boards, the board is.
Officials have entered into non-disclosure agreements with those developers.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be, I mean, that wouldn't be legal, yeah, that wouldn't be legal.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's legal, though, if somebody were to question.
We'd have to, I mean, I'm trying to think of, of a scenario where, I mean, sometimes you have, I mean, not here, obviously, but sometimes you have an executive session, you're bound by confidentiality, if you're discussing a real estate prospect, but even in that case, like, for example, a lot of people don't understand this, uh, if the commissioners had an executive session, I'm bound by confidentiality, but the commissioners can release whatever information they want out, cuz they're the ones that hold the privilege of confidentiality, if that makes sense, so I mean, if they have an executive session to discuss a real estate prospect, you know, me and anybody else in there is bound by confidentiality, they can choose to still release that information from a, an executive session out to the public.
Yeah, I'm not specifically talking about executive sessions, I'm just talking about elected officials having signed agreements with.
Yeah, cuz that would, I mean, to your point too, if it'll raise any concerns, I mean, if they signed anything as a board, they'd have to approve it in the public meeting anyway, so the public would would know.
I guess what I'm saying is, is some folks in some of these developments haven't found that out until they're ready to actually approve something. So if, if you had a policy out there saying that you wouldn't do that, that you wouldn't enter into those types of agreements, it might help reduce the temperature, that's all. That's all.
I'm just not sure we could even legally do that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to sound flippant in my response, but that's like passing an order that's not to murder somebody, I mean, you're already there to be the smart Alex, I know you're just bringing up public concerns, but I mean, it's like, you know what I'm saying, a policy to enforce an already illegal practice. I guess, I'm just, I'm confused.
The, the question I answered, it's funny that you said that, you must have been reading my mind, is I sent you a copy of it, I had to sign an NDA to be on the economic development foundation, and the more I think about that, I don't like that.
I cannot discuss what was discussed there in the.
And it puts you in, if you, especially, it puts you in, it puts you in a quandary about voting on, you know, voting on the, uh, the contract. I mean, I think that, I think no public official should sign an NDA with anybody.
Well, and tha- and that's why I was just suggesting if you had a policy against it, it's, it's just a no harm, no foul, it's not saying that you would ever do it, it's just saying that if somebody ever pointed to you and said, hey, you had, you ever understood, enter in, entered into one of these types of things? You say, no, we have a policy against it, that's obvious.
That's interesting thought.
I mean, it's just something to consider.
Yeah, appreciate that thought. Uh, anybody else? Roberta?
So one last piece, going back to our CIP and all of that, is I would encourage you guys to maybe go upstairs um, to the recorder's office and get a copy of the Stark County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Um, these should be fully updated about every ten years, and the soft updates about every five years. Ours is from two thousand. What I will tell you is that when you look at the goals of this county, we have not followed anything that was in movement scout brands of land use agreement in sixty-seven pages. Then, what I find, what I think is even more interesting is, when this was done in two thousand and three, the public was surveyed. And they built this around what the citizens in this county wanted. And we have done everything except what the citizens and taxpayers in this county wanted when it came to land use, so I would just encourage you guys to get a copy of it, and then consider what steps need to be taken to get this updated.
Well, it probably is something that should be on the radar, it is aged. Anything else from the public, ma'am?
This is about, I'm, I'm a little confused, I, I don't wanna open up a can of worms here, but on that lot in the industrial park, that the owner owns that property, then eight hundred feet, right, and the county is wanting that for their use?
Well, if we were to build another factory back there, we're gonna have to call that owner to, if they can drive on that road.
Okay.
My opinion. My opinion.
I, I got you, what I'm trying to get at is if, why would you ask him to pay for?
I don't know.
The road.
I get it, yeah.
You know, I mean, that hit me kinda funny, if the county is gonna take it over, why would you ask the guy to pay for?
Right, the county used to take care of the road for years. What's that?
Tom Bill, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last year or two, they have not, I don't know why, I don't know what caused it, you know, quit or whatever.
But the, the county would be taking over the property, so he, like, he would be giving you, giving the, you, giving the county the property.
If that's how it's plotted, I don't even know how it's.
That's why we're gonna have more discussion.
But yeah, I, I'm same with you.
Yeah, that, that struck me funny, why would you ask the guy, if he's giving you the, the property, why would you ask him to pay the fix to make it a road?
Rachel, do you know, does he own that property now, the road? Whoever put that in the industrial park, yeah.
Oh, industrial park, right?
Yeah. Wait for our next meeting, please, and send me an email, nothing, if you're not gonna be here.
Yeah.
That culvert on three fifty east is wrecking up today, the road will be reopened.
Awesome, good.
I talked to Emily about a couple things on there, but she probably told you, so, thanks, didn't take long.
No, it didn't, no, they started working on it Thursday, or Wednesday.
Okay, anything else? All right.
Most new gun.
Second. Oh, wait.
Aye.
Yeah, all those in favor? I don't want Rachel giving us hard.
Right.
We were just told it was being delivered.